Romans 12, verset 1 a 2. I beseech you therefore brethren, by the mercy of God, that you present your bodies a living sacrifice, wholly acceptable to God, which is your reasonable service; and do not be conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind, that you may prove what is that good and acceptable and perfect will of God. So I'm sitting here, and I'm thinking about my reflection, and I'm thinking about this song that is being played. And I'm enjoying the song because the lyrics are good and the musical accompaniment and the arrangement of this song is really beautiful. And the more they're repeated, the more of it I learn. But as I start to think about what this song is actually saying and start to measure up who I am and how I'm living and doing my checks and balances to find out if he really has my trust and my heart and my mind and that lady went into our bank account and our children and all those good things. I didn't go in those deep thoughts when I was thinking about what I was sharing tonight, but I'm so happy for the song. What I was thinking about is that, this is, this is not no bragging, I am faithful with my tithes in a way that I'm not faithful with my time and my energy. And I think it does take cash to care even in church. But I was wondering if he wants more of me when I look at Romans 12, verse 1. I wonder if the lady is singing about my trust and my heart and my desires and the things that I participate in and how I make him look. And where the song started? Where the song started? I was thinking about what happens when you present your body to the Lord. And the song that I had thought of singing along with the verse is a song that says, "Holy fire, burn away my desire for the things that are not of you, but only glorify me and please me." And I wonder if anybody else is getting that little nudge in the spirit where he does want us to go to a different place, a higher place, a more surrendered place, a place where serving him and serving the body is a little easier on our hearts and comes a little, with a little less pressure. We don't have to feel like we are giving up important things. And even if we're giving up important things, because there are things that are important. But I wonder if if the prime or the pride of place is him first and everything else after that. Because when, when I look at Romans 12, I think that's what he wants to say, to get rid of the things inside of our heart that stands between us and him and position ourselves in such a way that he is first. Not our desires, not our ambitions, not our children. And I probably can say that's so much easier than some other persons because I don't have no children yet. But I wonder if our bank account and our extended travel for vacation and luxury. I'm gonna stop now. And just the finer things in life. The pursuit. And I have two minutes. I want to say one other thing. There, there was a very cut in video that was being circulated in our church. I think earlier this month about this same kind of thing, about how we prioritize work and those kinds of stuff. And when I saw it, I couldn't deny the truth in it because it spoke for itself. But I thought about other things. I thought about how we witness to our children and we can't leave them out of the conversation at all. Sometimes we leave them at home to come to church. And sometimes we show greater enthusiasm and passion for education and sports than we show for children's church and youth meeting and even Sunday morning service. They can't miss such an evening class or such a day morning class, but they can miss Sunday school because they have work to do for school the next day. And I wonder if we have sown seed into the hearts of our children from very early as they learn to watch us prioritize what is important. And like I said, I'm gonna stop because I'm not the main presenter for the night. But I would love Lord Jesus. I would love Lord as you call our spirits to attention at this time, in this place, in this moment, Lord. I don't know how to reach all of Spanish town, but you do. And you don't know what you're whispering to the hearts of people in your church, but you do. Lord, I want to lift up my church, Twickenham Park Open Bible to you. It's more your church than it is my church, but it's the place where I belong and where I call home. And Lord, I know that there is so much more that you can do in us. I pray for liberty in worship. I pray for greater surrender. I pray for eagerness and willingness to serve. I pray for submitting ourselves to the call to holiness. I pray, Lord, that as your word go forth, that we will not just be shaken and stirred, but Lord, we'll be changed from glory to glory. Lord, as you pour yourself out on us and among us, as you bless us from one Sunday to the next, from day to day, I pray, Lord, that you give us grateful hearts. I pray, Father, in the name of Jesus, that you will align our spirit with the work of the Spirit of the Living God. I know, Lord, that you have a call and that you have a very specific work that we have to do as we are surrounded by these neighbors and these communities. And so, Lord, I ask that your Holy Spirit will empower us to serve one another and to serve in our homes and to serve in our workplace and to serve in our community. Lord, there is a work that you have called us to do in Spanish town. And as you reveal your mission for our church and your vision for our church and the broader vision that you have placed us in this community for, I pray, Lord, that we will be willing and quick to do what you want us to do because the fields are white. Lord, visit us, oh God, with your touch. Assure us with your presence. Cause us to know in our knower that you will never leave us and that you will never forsake us. And that, Lord, even in the hard times, your word of the Lord hears the song says that in the good times and in the bad times, we can praise your name. We want to give honor to you, Lord. We want to hand over this time of sitting down and studying your word over to you. We want to ask for your anointing on our presenter tonight. We want to ask, Lord, that you will soften our hearts to hear you easily and that the word will go deep in our hearts. Spirit of the Living God, I pray that your word tonight will take root and bear fruit. I pray that, Lord, you will stir us up and give us an insatiable appetite for reading the word on our own. And as we sit down, Holy Spirit, we pray that you will sit down with us and make reading and understanding and living out the word easy. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Welcome, Sister Barbara. We hand over to me, Pastor.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to assume that you're hearing me. Okay, so Hebrews chapter 5, we have 14 verses. And we're going to ask the persons who are online to lead the reading. How about that? So we have three people so far online. We're going to ask you to read the lesson, starting with Sister Garcia, then Sister Sharon, and then Sister Sharon again. Um, five, five and four verses in that order. Hello? No, I know where I'm not.
Who is starting, Pastor?
Oh, Garcia.
Oh, all right. No problem.
All right. So Garcia, then Sharon, and then Sharon Edwards.
Sorry, sorry, Pastor, may, um, could Sharon start? Um, I'm a little bit, my phone is acting up.
That's all right. You ready? Oh, 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 Sharon?
Sharon could start and then I'll phone.
Okay, all right.
All right, Hebrews 5.
Yeah.
Hebrews 5, I'm reading NIV. Every eye priest is selected from among men and is appointed to represent them in matters related to God, to offer gifts and sacrifices for sin. He is able to deal gently with those who are ignorant and who are going astray. Since he himself is subject to weakness, this is why he has to offer sacrifices for his own sin as well as for the sins of the people. No one takes this honor upon himself. He must be called by God, just as Aaron was. So Christ also did not take upon himself the glory of becoming an eye priest. But God said to him, "You are my son. Today I have become your father." And he said in another place, "You are a priest forever in the order of Melchizedek."
Verse 7. "Who in the days of his flesh, when he had offered up prayers and supplications with strong crying and tears unto him that was able to save him from death, and was heard in that he feared; though he were a son, yet learnt he obedience by the things which he suffered. And being made perfect, he became the altar of eternal salvation unto all them that obey him, called of God an eye priest after the order of Melchizedek, of whom we have many things to say and hard to be uttered, seeing we are dull of hearing." Should I continue?
Okay. Where, where this Sister Sharon go?
I'm to continue from verse 12. I'm reading from the NIV version. "In fact, though by this time you ought to be teachers, you need someone to teach you the elementary truths of God's word all over again. You need milk, not solid food. Anyone who lives on milk, being still an infant, is not acquainted with the teaching about righteousness. But solid food is for the mature, who by constant use have trained themselves to distinguish good from evil." Should I continue?
Yes. There's no more, baby. Is verse 14 is the end?
Okay.
All right. All right. Let, let, let's pray again. Father, we thank you for the freedom we have, not just physically from the fear of harassment in this great land of so much promise that you've blessed us with. But we thank you, Lord, for the freedom we have of access to you so you can talk to us by your Holy Spirit. So as we come, we're asking you for open hearts and minds yielded to you so we can not just grasp in our heads, but embrace in our hearts who you are to us and what we have in you. In our prayer, we ask you in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Jesus, our great high priest and the writer to the Hebrews is a man who endeth cut straight to the chase, the heart of the matter. Uh, and a, a quick recap of where we learn of this um, introduction of Jesus as our great high priest. We're reminded of it in Hebrews chapter 4, verse 14 and verse 15, that he was a high priest after, well, better than what we had in, in Moses. And Moses, as you will recall, is or was the outstanding leader of Israel, who led them out of Egypt, who was the means by which God passed on the commandments, the means by which they experienced a nation, many, 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 many miracles. And they saw wonders in the desert. What makes him so great a high priest? Well, as we read in verse 14 and verse 15 of chapter 4, he has passed through the heavens, passed through earth, feels all things, the Bible says elsewhere in Ephesians chapter 4. And he is able despite all of that, can we call it glory, status? He is able to sympathize with our weaknesses. You know how weak we are, even though sometimes we not think we're weak. But we know how weak we are. So he really is indeed a great high priest because he has left eminence being equal with God to come down here and share human nature with us in order to lift us up. That's the heart of the recap. Now, the writer to the Hebrews goes on. He says, "For every high priest," so he's going deeper into the high priesthood of Jesus. He says, "Not therefore," no, you know, this time he says, "for." So there is a progression here. He is going a little deeper into how much of a great high priest Jesus is. He makes the comparison with the role of the high priest. He identifies how Jesus fills this role. The role of the high priest is to offer gifts and sacrifices on our behalf. First thing. That's what the high priest did back in the, under Mosaic law. He would receive the gifts for sin and peace offerings and burnt offerings from the people and offer on their behalf. He was a go-between. Being a human being himself, he sympathized with the weaknesses of his fellow. Human beings, the Bible says, not only was he willing and able to exercise gentleness and patience towards the ignorant and the erring according to the Amplified Bible, but he was also required, obliged to offer sacrifices for his own sin. He could not afford to forget his own sinful nature, his own humanity. Yeah, then Pastor, what that have to do with Jesus? Jesus was perfect. Well, we're moving on. We will, we'll, we'll get there. The call or the appointment of the high priest, nobody takes it on to himself. The high priest was chosen from among men. God specifically named a tribe born out of the lines of Abraham, Levi, to be the ones who would fulfill the role to the nation of the priest. Hebrews chapter 3, verse 26, and chapter 5, verse 6 to verse 10 help us with an explanation, a comparison of Jesus' appointment, call to the office of high priest. Volunteers to read. Hebrews 3, verse 26, or chapter 5, verse 6 to verse 10. 3, 20, 3, hold on, no, hold on, it's not 26. Where did I get that from? Sorry. Hebrews 3, verse 6. Yeah. Where did that 2 come from?
"Christ as a son over his own house, whose house are weak, if we hold fast in confidence and the rejoicing of the whole from until the end."
Okay. And verse 2, Hebrews 3, verse 2.
"The true self, who was faithful to him that appointed him, as also Moses was faithful in all his house."
All right. So between verse 2 and verse 6 of Hebrews chapter 3, it becomes clear for us that God appointed Jesus to be apostle and high priest. He was appointed. Where the appointment come from? Can we, can we just go back, go back quickly to Hebrew, no, Psalm 2, verse 2, verse 6, and verse 7?
4, verse 6?
Yeah, 2, Psalm 2, verse 2, verse 6, and verse 7.
Psalm 2, verse 2? "The king of the earth set themselves and rode as they come together against the law and against this aligning, saying..."
All right. Now we hear what I'm saying. Verse 3.
"Oh, it does very dear bands, a sound and across the way they are called from us."
Okay. All right, verse 6 now. Your man.
Of chapter 2?
Uh huh. Psalm 2, verse 6.
Yeah.
"He have I set my king upon my own view of Zion."
All right. And then verse 7.
Verse 7. I will, of chapter 2. "I will declare the decree the Lord hath set unto me, Thou art my son; this day have I begun thee."
All right. What we're looking at there in Psalm 2 is a messianic psalm. So Jesus we see is anointed, 1, meaning the Messiah, the Christ. Then verse 6, he is anointed as king on my holy hill Zion. And then in verse 7, he is declared my son. Oh, we know Christ, but yeah, in terms of, we call it genealogy, was son of David. But not in the context here. He is the Lord. He has been anointed. He has been decreed, declared, "You are my son." Okay, so again, the role is not taken on to itself. Nobody just jumps up and say, "I am a high priest." Not even among the Levites. There was an order that was to be fulfilled. Who's going to read verse 6 to verse 10 of chapter 5?
Psalm?
Hebrews 5. Want to implore the brethren online that they must feel free to read. Hebrews chapter 5, 6 to 10.
6 to 10. "As he sae also in another place, thou art a priest forever after the order of Melchizedek, who in the days of his flesh, when he had offered up prayers and supplications with strong crying and tears unto him, that was able to save him from death, and was heard in that he feared; too, though..." To though, though he were a son, yet learned he obedience by the things which he suffered. And being made perfect, he became the author of eternal salvation unto all them that obeyed him. Call of God and high priest after the order of Melchizedek.
Alright, so, so we know from here that Christ suffered. Now, apart from the physical suffering, there was the great extent to which he endured being human, limitations of being human. So that we find him not just obliged to, to pray himself. Because God on earth, in the flesh, even though he was, him still wasn't while he was on earth, everywhere at the same time. So we call him son of man. Subject, subject to the limitations of flesh. So he knew what it was to make supplications, prayer, special petitions. What it was according to the Amplified Bible to use strong crying and tears to him who was always able to save him from death. No, I don't have to ask us. You remember Jesus praying while he was here? He prayed often. And he prayed until his sweat became like drops of blood. We saw him crying when he visited the dead yard at, at, at Latheros's family. In fact, let's read John eleven thirty-five. I was going to say eleven thirty-five to forty-two. And Luke twenty-two, thirty-nine to forty-six. So here, here is more evidence of how Jesus is able to identify with us in, in all of what we go through. So John eleven thirty-five to forty-two, and Luke twenty-two, thirty-nine to forty-six.
Thirty-five to forty-two?
Hmm, Luke eleven.
Luke?
Yeah, Luke eleven, no, sorry, John eleven, John eleven thirty-five to forty-three.
Jesus wept, then said the Jews, behold how ye loved him. And some of them said, could not this man, which opened the eyes of the blind, have caused that even this man should not have died? Jesus therefore again, rolling in himself, cometh to the grave. It was a cave and a stone lay upon it. Jesus said, take ye away the stone, Martha. Oh, sorry, Jesus said, take, take ye away the stone. Martha, the sister of him that was dead, saith unto him, Lord, by this time he stinketh, for he hath been dead four days. Jesus saith unto her, said I not unto thee that if thou wouldst believe, thou shouldst see the glory of God. Then they took away the stone from the place where the dead was laid. And Jesus lifted up his eyes and said, Father, I thank thee that thou hast heard me. And I knew that thou hearest me always. But because of the people which stand by, I said it, that they may believe that thou hast sent me.
Alright, so, so Jesus makes a point here that the father always hear him. So now just one prayer a day in prayer. And now one prayer we pray, pray it at night or pray it at day. Alright, he is praying because he's moved with compassion for a family with whom he enjoys deep friendship. Remember, we look, the reference here is that in the days of his flesh, Jesus offered up definite, specific petitions for things he needed, and supplications with strong crying and tears to him who was able to save him. Hebrews chapter five, verse seven, from the Amplified Bible. Alright. Now we come to this reference, we see we're being introduced to Melchizedek. Melchizedek, we find reference to him in Genesis fourteen, eighteen to twenty, Psalm one hundred and ten, verse four, and Hebrews seven, verse one to verse seven. What is so exceptional about Melchizedek? That we hear Jesus being, mean, Jesus is being referred to as a high priest in the order of Melchizedek. Remember now, remember now, Jesus is not from the tribe of the Levites. Hmm? Remember, he is a, 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 he is divine in nature. But enters earth through being born of a woman. Hmm? But I don't want to run ahead of myself. So Genesis fourteen, eighteen to twenty. This is our introduction to Melchizedek. Somebody want to read for us?
I will take that, sir.
Go right ahead.
Um, eighteen, then Melchizedek, king of Salem, brought out bread and wine. He was a priest of God most high, and he blessed Abraham saying, blessed be Abraham by God most high, creator of heaven and earth. And he blessed, and he, and bless be God most high, who delivered your enemies into your hand.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. What did he receive from Abraham? Anybody? Alright, we're going forward. Psalm one hundred and ten, verse four. Another volunteer.
The Lord has sworn and will not change his mind. You are a priest.
You're a priest forever after the order of Melchizedek.
Alright, the Lord has sworn and he will not change his mind. You, again, this is prophetic. David was not a priest. Hmm? It is God who has sworn that this person is going to be a priest after the manner, after the order of Melchizedek. God is not going to change his mind. Alright, so then, who was Melchizedek? In the, in the four or five verses that we've read, there are some things which are clear to us about who was Melchizedek and things that we can relate back to Christ. We've already seen from scripture that, that Christ was entrusted with the high priestly responsibility by no less an authority than God himself. Alright. Now, Melchizedek, we're told in Genesis chapter fourteen was the king of Salem. Salem was going to become Jerusalem. Alright. He was also the, he was also the king of righteousness. The king of peace. And he is, him don't have no ancestral line, him just appear. No mother, no father. Him just appear to Abraham. And Abraham recognized that there was something special about Melchizedek. How we know that? How we come to that? How, how does Abraham decide that Melchizedek him don't know where my peer from, him just come to help Abraham win a war?
I wonder if Abraham knows the voice. Cause them usually talk before.
And, 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 and the other?
More enlightened.
We, we, we don't know, all we, all we, all we know is that Melchizedek appears. And, and right away, right away, Abraham, who has been spoken to by God repeatedly, knows, knows that this man is worthy of accepting time. One tenth of the spoils.
Of all.
Hmm?
Times of all.
Alright. Why? Alright. The male part of, oh boy. Melchizedek had no successor as priest. Nobody came after Melchizedek as a priest. In the same way, Jesus on the cross declared, it is finished. In Hebrews chapter nine, after he had made one sacrifice for sins, he sat down. The need for a priest was settled. And, and then here, here the other distinction about Christ as a high priest. Remember we said at the beginning, or earlier on, that Levi descended from the lines, the heritage of Abraham. Christ did not. He was out of David, Judas tribe, not Levi's. Hmm? So he is priest above all priests, exceptional. And with him, the, the, the need for a priest ends. He fulfills the role henceforth for all eternity. Okay. We come now to one of what the movie Bible commentary calls another, another danger that the writer to the Hebrews is keen to point out. The keen to warn these Hebrew believers about. We've looked at the danger of drifting. Last week we saw the danger of disbelief. Now we're looking at the danger of defecting from the truth. And the language, the language, the language went sound harsh. The language went sound as if he is disappointed ah, with, with, with the believers. But him, him really have a, a deep concern for, for them. He has a deep concern for what is, what he feels is, is them, them, them spiritual state. Verse eleven and verse twelve. Would somebody like to read Hebrews five, eleven, and twelve?
Hebrews five?
Eleven and twelve.
Twelve, okay. We have much to say about this. But it is hard to make it clear to you because you have no longer tried to understand. In fact, though, by this time you ought to be teachers. You need someone to teach you the elementary truths of God's word all over again. You need milk, not solid food.
Hmm. That's on rough course, eh? It's on course.
Said he was direct.
Yeah.
That's all very direct.
Yeah, him, him, him say, him say, we're not supposed to have got through this again, you know? Because a long time, you know, on a field, long time, long time, we, we've been trying to explain, help you to understand. Amplified Bible uses some strong words to describe, to render, verse eleven, it says, we have much to say, but it is hard to explain since you have become dull in your hearing and sluggish, even sloppful. In other words, we not pay the word of God the kind of attention that we should be paying to it. Even though by this time you ought to be teachers, you actually need somebody to teach you. What is, what would cause the, the, the writer to resort to this kind of language? When in fact, in trying, in, in trying to, to help, in trying to encourage people to, to, to step up their walk to the Lord. Remember now, in our fairness to them, that they are under pressure. They are under pressure because there are those who want them to go back in their faith to accepting or go back to Mosaic law and practices rather than keep on trusting in Jesus, obeying God's word, that Jesus alone is the all in all that we need for a full and free salvation. There are no, no hindrances and no limits to trusting in Jesus. It has already been made plain that Jesus is, because he has gone through everything that we are ever likely to go through. It has already been made plain that Jesus is, because he has gone through everything that we are ever likely to go through and overcame them. We have this high priest who can make intercession for us. When we have him, we have everything. And we come, we come to a, 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 a basic discussion, comparison. After the cause of their being dull and, and unable to accept the, the truth of who Jesus is. And it seems to me like our, our acceptance of God's word or confidence in God's word or reliance on God's word, or, 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 or familiarity with it. The, the kind of discipline we apply in, in, in studying it and applying it is what is going to determine how we respond to the challenges that we face, the temptations that we face. So here's a question. What is your dietary staple? Milk or dashin? Hmm? The word of God or what the media tells you? The word of God or what, um, what, what social media tells you? Are the going trends in, in, in self-actualization? And wealth accumulation and all these other things that we are being told we must get familiar with? Here what? All of us, all of us must know that growth in anything that we are undertaking, anything we're embracing, growth is a reasonable expectation. Me and you, for yourself, know that. Nobody not to tell me. If we there, we not progress, we're gonna look for something else. Or we're gonna look somewhere else. Growth is a reasonable expectation. None of us want to be the same place we were fifteen and twenty years ago. But we must also accept that growth is the food, is the product of diligence you apply yourself to something. And that application is what makes you strong in that thing. That's how you build up your muscles because you are constantly lifting ten pounds and walking five miles. And then when that is not good enough for you, you lift fifteen pounds and you walk seven and a half miles. The idea is that we are constantly applying ourselves to the word of God. Over time, our diets will affect our health. Eat pure drunk food. Ta-da! You hear the skill. Milk alone, milk alone can't sustain you. Can't sustain me. Eh? In fact, let, let's read, let's read verse thirteen of chapter five to hear what the milk-based diet. Lactose and paleran. Okay. Hebrews five, verse thirteen.
Yes, I'll continue. Anyone who, anyone who lives on milk, being still an infant, is not acquainted with the teaching about righteousness. But solid food is for the mature who by constant use have trained themselves to distinguish good from evil.
Alright. So, um, thank you, Sharon. A milk-based diet, the amplified Bible tells us, produces inexperienced, unskilled infants. And this is directly directly concerning righteousness. Mm-hmm. Unskilled, inexperienced when it comes to the doctrine of righteousness. Alright. Alright. Read, read, read. The, the question is, the question is, the question is, how do you identify somebody? Who, who is using milk as a staple?
That infant word.
Yes.
And, and the, I guess you have it there, the ending part of it said, not able to talk yet.
Not able to talk yet.
So what do you think of an infant?
Alright.
Who is not even able to talk.
I mean, you can't talk about the scripture.
Yeah. To begin with.
Right.
Not clear as to what them believe and the basis for believing it. Can't give a reason for the hope that lies within them. The, 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 the priorities of life look like a, it, it contradict what scripture said. Them, 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 them all about satisfying immediate need all the time at whatever cost. Even if it means they might have to step out of line. Engage in all cook pre-clums of sin. We, we'll come back to it. That is a good question. Solid food produces trained and discerning soldiers. Solid food becomes those whose senses and mental faculties, it don't mean them to unroad scholar, you know? And, and nuclear physicists. It means that they are, they have become practiced, trained in how to discriminate and how to distinguish between what is good and noble as against what is evil and contrary to God's word. These are the Philippians chapter four, verse eight kind of people. Here, 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 a little more on of what your diet, how it is going to impact how, how we look, how we shape up. The, the, the diet of solid food. The diet that will cause us to eat some dashin' and some dry yellow yam and some cassava. That, that diet, that diet is the one that will take God's word and mull and true and regurgitate and go over and go over. I will tell you to do what don't come natural to it. When, when, when the spirit use our word to confront with both with attitude towards somebody. Eh? That is the word of righteousness, the doctrine of righteousness. And maybe you know, say sometime, we, it have a hard time of get through to it because and also we see yeah, we want a heart of flesh. But there is a doctrine of righteousness. That doctrine is produced by hearing, applying God's word. Because we have this great high priest who is taught through the feelings of our infirmities, who we can come to in the time of need and receive grace to help us. Because he has overcome everything that we face. We can rely on him to help us. And that does not mean that it is going to happen overnight. It does not mean that it is going to happen just so, without any pain. Hmm? I remember, I remember Habakkuk said, "God is not right. You can't use them wicked people to come judge your people." And he here said the answer going come. And he say, no, see the answer, but he might climb up in there and watch. Hmm? Because God who said, when bring it to pass. Man, you have some, some struggles where we are fight for a long time. And God tell you, no one help you if you overcome it. And we make progress when we obey God's word. But every time we, we, we pull back or pull back from the word or find myself slipping. Find myself slipping. Person who is on a diet of solid food is putting, putting his or her life priorities under the control, it's subject to the direction of this high priest, this apostle of ours. Great high priest, great apostle, who is making intercession, who is being our advocate with the fact. Job said, "He is my witness on high." Where Job know about witness on high? Eh? He will plead my cause before God. And the aim is, the aim of eating solid food and subjecting ourselves, submitting ourselves to, to God's purpose. To the righteousness, the word of righteousness, the doctrine of righteousness, however your Bible renders it. The aim of that is that our, our purpose, our purpose, our thought life and our actions are going to conform to the will of this God we serve and the high priest who he has given to us to be our helper, to be our witness. And, and if, if that is not our life priority, then what about we will and come again? What about reexamine? What are my motivations? What are my priorities in naming the name of Christ? Can I trust him enough with every little decision that come up before me? Are some things, God didn't have to get involved in this. Hmm? But when we find ourselves in a mess, far away or there. Philippians three, verse ten to verse fourteen. When we talking about the purpose, when we talking about our priority in life. Being conformity to God's purposes, our thoughts being conformed to his, our actions being in keeping with, with, with his word. Here, here is a full example of what it really, what we're really striving after. The, the apostle Paul himself writing from prison. Writing because the same gospel him and the same God who he is serving lead him to prison. Here what Paul is saying from prison. Volunteer to read?
I'll read.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, Philippians three, ten forty. "That I may know him and the power of his resurrection and the fellowship of his sufferings being made con-formable unto his death. If by any means I might attain unto the resurrection of the dead, not as though I had already attained, either were already perfect. But I follow, if that I may apprehend, that for which also I am apprehended of Christ Jesus. Wetheren, I call not myself to have apprehended, but this one thing I do, forgetting those things which are behind and reaching forth unto those things which are before. I press towards the mark for the prize of the high calling of God in Christ Jesus."
Amen. Amens. Thank you, Sister Garcia. We're not, we're not pressing in a vacuum. We're not pressing in our own strength. What we are doing is responding to what the spirit of God is pointing us to, what he is drawing us to by virtue of his word. So when we apply ourselves to the study of the word, his spirit is going to show us where we shot, where we weak. And he is going to open our eyes to some newer and better horizons that he invites us and he is available to help us to strive after, to come into. Paul uses words in that passage that Sister Garcia just read like attained. He can't attain nothing. Eh? In, in, in striving outside because the spirit of God is, is, is In 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 striving outside because the spirit of God is 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 ruling, drawing, inspiring him, exciting him, come up higher. I I I may you from time to time get drawn into that kind of longing and desire. Because we can't come to the word of God and we can't come into encounter with God and be comfortable. Go back the same way we come. Paul himself says, "Like a man who are looking in a mirror, I forget what manner of man he is when we see ourselves." So I say, "Come up higher." Come up higher. Comments, questions, answers?
What what can we reading hold us back on? Come up higher. What would you can hold us back? I want hold us back.
What holds us back? The the very, very common one, I think, is of being comfortable with where we are now. Someone with like our sister Barbara says is laziness. You 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 will become complacent. Meaning over there is a good place. You know, you know, you know, drink and drunk. You have no woman out the door. You know, teeth, nobody, you play me tie. But we run a bandol thing on the side, you know? Because money there to make somewhere. Yeah, yeah, the answer. Um, part of the same complacency is not for reading, I have no divorcions every day. You not to spend the time before God at all about my life because I'm good.
And I'm not made to work. It's just spiritual worship for my car.
I had to make, I go to radio station, you know? You know? We watch church every Sunday. Then I have to study my Bible. I wouldn't take it serious. Well.
No, we take it serious, man. We come to church Monday and the people in maturation, you know what's there? Me Felina has a good, good Christian. Until I leave. And I'm less sure. Now, what is that? Do they think have no guns in their head, man, really, driver?
Yeah.
Nobody from Switzerland, probably, they are not kill it. Or I could be working very hard and not being lazy. But I know that Lord called to be a teacher. But working in advertising or marketing makes so much more money. So I could retire from marketing and advertising, but still have not walked or followed or done the thing. And I still would have come up short at the end of my day.
The explanation, the explanation that that Hebrews five thirteen gives about what the doctrine or the word of righteousness is. May you, may you very often we limited to to a set of dos and don'ts. When when God have bigger purpose for us than than does that. So career? My choice that. My choice that. May may may. It can't come to me, I must go go to missionary. Our our our, we we we'll 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 take on, take on a girl or take on a boy. And and you 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 see danger all over it.
You mean adopt a child?
No, no adopt, not adopt. This is, this is taking on entering into relationship with big people things. And 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 you you should do danger, you should do danger, but God, I mean, I'm going to come funny. And I'm I'm a girl who needs to be kept well. So when we, when we talking about about fulfilling God's, doing what is right in God's eyes, it's not just limited to. It is not limited to a set of dos and don'ts, go to church, don't go to party. You you get what I'm saying? With the the thought life, how you think is it being influenced by God's word? Dying daily. Any other question, comment, anybody in person or brethren online? Anybody?
This morning I was, um, listening to, I think it's a devotion, a devotion to what's happening. But their title was, and to say like, that just came to her, nothing. I mean there.
Yes.
Uh, the topic was something like, what is altering your altar?
Okay.
What is A L T E R I N G A or A L T A R?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Sharon. We hear, you you heard, we heard Doreen with the question, what is altering your altar? When when Jesus tells us that a man's life does not consist of the abundance of the things he possesses, when he says, "Man will not live by bread alone." In in, this is Elder Ashman spoke on Sunday morning about this rich church that had everything service. It is is the same same message we we getting to. The the business of of life priorities. The fact that we, the fact that we want to to go after God with the whole heart. Like like we heard Selena quoting Hebrews chapter twelve. No, not Hebrew, Romans chapter twelve, verse one and verse two earlier on. Any any other question, comment, brethren?
Yes, earlier that, um, growth is a reasonable expectation. And in speaking, he said that something every week stop happening, you'll go elsewhere.
Yeah.
I am wondering, that is something that is true of what just happened in our church. Where a number of people absent, huh? And our growth, is it is it reasonable for them, having said that then, to leave the church because growth is not happening? It's a reasonable expectation. So if it's not happening here, let me go and say.
Yeah, the 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 worry, brethren online, I I I believe, I hope you heard the question, that if you're in a church that is where you find you're not growing, then then it is a reasonable thing for you to leave in pursuit of growth. The 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 one thing I would say to that is you owe it to yourself to look at what do you have in mind? What do you define growth as? And also ask yourself the question, how many other churches have you been to before? And you have left in pursuit of growth? Worthwhile question. Because growth comes out of the personal response to what the spirit of the Lord is going to do by virtue of our obedience. The Bible says, "Jesus qualified. Jesus attained perfection through suffering, through obedience." And we don't love them more than obedience, suffering. When we know that. Cause, cause my 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 thing, my my idea of growth, you know, is is excitement. Your man something fair go on every time. Yeah, it must have happened and if it not happen, oh, they say, we're gone. That that again, that is why we we need to be careful as believers about what we use to measure our our fulfillment, what our success is. We want a fulfillment that comes out of a real consciousness of being where God wants us to be. A a a a love, a a an embrace of what he want, the character he want to build in us. Hmm, may I, may I you working on caution fight over a same thing? I may use the caution fight about fifteen, ten years ago.
But suppose then you'll change. You just say, all right, that's the, yeah, I've got cross over.
No, 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 no. Because because if if you if you if you respond the same way that you used to respond years ago, then then you have a good, you have a good basis upon which to ask. So maybe the problem is not, is not them, the problem is me. Where we come from with that? God ever, whatever, God is a potter, you see? He made, he made the ceramic master. And him have a vessel of clay on the wheel in front of him. And 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 the vessel, the vessel priest, the vessel now looks alright. Eh, vessel now respond to all him a pour on the king and I shake it, vessel now respond. So you start war. Oh, may you allow the start war thing, you know? If you, if you come to me with that, I go on next church. If you come to me with that, you know, forgive nobody. You just stop do it. Don't get me involved in another ministry again because my attitude would stink, right? Not many people involved in that ministry. So if you want the ministry continue, just allow me. But we want to grow. All right, any other question, comment? All right.
I can find no more question, but I guess you have, you are listening us, your, your points. What can I aspire to study?
Yeah.
Because somehow in this study, I I could not see the connection when you moved, I didn't see how you connected it. When you move from Jesus, the high priest, they started talking about Jesus, the high priest. And so when you went to the middle story, I just couldn't see the connection between what you were talking about. And Jesus the high priest, then you jumped to the middle thing.
I was there too, but then he said the part about Jesus, the high priest, being God of grace and his mercy. Because of the high priest with all his capabilities, all we is. And his mercy, he knows that we are, what was the word to use? We are, our infirmities.
Weak, our weaknesses.
We are weak, we are weak.
May we, may we go back to you, little man? Can do another five minutes? Sorry, Hebrews chapter five, verse, well, we're not going to go back to ten. Let's pick it up.
I think the transition was when you started talking about how belong, the the right.
Yes, yes. He he wanted, he, the 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 writer is trying to to get some people attention, to get them, to get them to focus on the fact that we have such a great high priest that is able to to help us in all kinds of yeah, trial and crosses and what else. He tests, he's able to help us. He is showing how much better this high priest was than any other that they knew about. Include, including Aaron. All right.
So he is capable of helping us with all the gifts and trials that we're in. And so Pastor's making the point that the writer is talking to a group of persons wanting to go. Like they want to go back to the mosaic world or to what they were consequences and then starting from moving forward. So in that space of stopness, they should have matured beyond the point that he now has to break this down so far back, peel that onion so far back to get them to understand. He's saying to them, "You should be able, as long as you're here, you should be able to teach others this." So he used a kind of symbolism to say, instead of eating dry yam and and cassava and stuff.
Because the use of the symbol, you know, I just didn't see any connection to what he's talking about first. He doesn't understand the symbol.
Is that you there?
Any other question or comment before we ask Sister Barbara to talk in prayer for us? All right, Sister Barbara. No, sorry, one, one minute, one minute.
Pastor, if if we, um, if we try to bypass the whatever. My, I miss you, otherwise my. My, I miss have, otherwise my cut of different, different thing. If you bypass whatever, okay, sometime we don't, we don't think it's serious or it is somehow so it's, it's real and it's true. My bypass to something else.
Yeah.
Then we get caught up in other different things and in life and whatnot.
Well, well, the, the business of, of
And this is, this is, this is the business.
Yes. But this, this, this is the world business of drifting. Well, I think
Yeah, I feel kind drifting, yes.
Yes. A, 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 a gentleman, you know, the marine industry in our church. Sunday morning after him, after we spoke about drifting, him come to me and said, drifting, you can be on a ship drifting. You don't realize?
I miss you from also, when you look around.
Ah, when you look around, you say, what we, we appear on.
You have to keep stuck.
Yeah.
Keep changing.
Diligent application.
So you can be a Christian the one that I did okay?
No, you cannot church.
You can't church, not in a museum, you can't.
You can't. You don't. Because, because we, we are so focused on, on our routines.
Yes.
That we now ask ourselves, I'm gonna do this again, who am I doing it for? Um, why am I doing it? Sometime, sometime God want move you from a particular place to something else. But this is, this is what me know. Hmm? This is what me comfortable with.
You're taking away from and not realizing itself?
You don't. You can, you can, because you, you've become so comfortable in a routine. Yeah.
Alright.
Alright.
I'm gonna refer to, I'm gonna answer. We give it thanks in our for the privilege of being in this Bible study. We thank you because your words are never too much for us and we must confess that Lord at times we really do not pay enough attention. We go to the routine of reading what we, we haven't stopped to study and to apply the words to our lives and so sometimes we become very weak and we fail so easily because of lack of application of your words. But tonight we want to thank you again that you have brought us here. We have listened to your words, we thank you. Your words remind us that you are the great high priest. We thank you Lord that you are touched by the feeling of our sorrows. We want to thank you that you understand everything that we have been through and that you understand everything that we will go through spiritually, physically. And we thank you Lord to know that you are always there ready for us to call on you. Your arms are always outstretched to help us. And so we pray that you will help us to grasp a hold of you in our times of need. We know that there are times, Lord, that we think we can do it all by ourselves and we just go ahead and do not engage you or invite you in our situation because we think we know how. But we pray tonight, Lord, that you will help us to call on you in every situation. Your words tell us we should trust in you with all our hearts. And we should not lean on our own understanding, but in all our ways, we should acknowledge you in everything that we do. We should acknowledge you and Lord you will direct our path. We pray tonight, Lord, that as we have listened, as we have heard your words, as we have shared, that you will help us to dive and delve so deep into your words that we will not be like the babes drinking milk, but Lord we will be handling your words as mature Christians. Being able to give an account of our faith, of our belief, stand up to people who have things to say that are not truly able to talk about you, be able to use your words skillfully. I pray, God, that you will grant us the desire to get deeper into understanding you and who you are. We pray for desire for you, desire for your words, Lord. Because it is through your words that we get understanding and we understand the ways of man. So Lord, we pray that as we leave here tonight, that you will grant us the desire to read your words, take us out of the form of laziness, Lord. Where we are just concerned about doing a devotional, reading what is said before us, but no time to concentrate on the word or for any other time in the day, spending time on your words. Leave us a desire for more of you as the days of your coming draw closer. And so, God, that we're allowing to be girded with the word of God. So we'll be able to stand for you at the times when we are required to. So Lord, we entrust ourselves into your care tonight and we thank you for what you're going to do. For Lord, for now, as we leave here to go, we pray that you will give us journey mercies, will you cover us, Almighty God? And be to your will that we meet again, then we pray that you will meet with us. And until then, our hearts will desire you as we seek to live for you more and more. Here as we pray, Father. And we thank you in Jesus' name.